Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoc City Council meeting. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Holmdal. Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Lingle.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ashley Costa.
Present.
Mayor John Lynn.
Here. And for those of you at home watching us, Councilmember Holmdal is representing the Lompoc Valley at a wine tasting where he's going to taste 5,000? I don't know, some horrendous number of wine judging, I'm sorry. And right now, though, he's at a party, I think. So, he's retired from the day from his hard work promoting wine in the Lompoc Valley. This evening, we have one really quick closed session item. We have a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section 5, 4956 dot nine. One matter, and it's got to be pretty short because we're going to be back in 15 minutes, so we'll see you soon. Good evening, and welcome back to the Lompoc City Council meeting. I want to announce that anyone that's not seated in the first three rows does not get a cupcake when we have a break, so you guys that sat in the back, sorry you missed it. Okay. From our closed session, which was very short, we had no reportable action. And now Pastor Langen for our invocation. If you would all please rise.
Dear God, thank you for your constant presence through which we can have conversations. Thank you for the new year we are beginning. Tonight, I want to talk with you about our city council meeting. I'm asking your blessing and guidance upon each member. Mayor John Lynn. Mayor Protem Ashley Costa. Our council members, other council members, Bob Lingle and Dirk Starbuck. For Dwayne Holmdal, who is not present with us tonight but is in other meeting. For our city clerk, Stacy Alvarez, and our interim and assistant administrator, Tracy, and for our administrator, Patrick Wy Miller, who's being installed tonight. I want to also remember everyone in this chamber tonight as we consider every agenda item as well as other things that are brought to the floor. Each of us has things that we're dealing with which may influence how we think and act. Help us each to be considerate of the other. We acknowledge you as our loving and forgiving God. Amen.
Can you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, founded under God and in the wisdom of its history and justice for all.
This evening, we have a presentation from the Lompoc Library Literacy Coordinator and give us an update on the library literacy program.
Good evening, Mayor Lynn and council members. My name's Christina Chil. And January 7, 1991, 23 years ago today, I was hired as the library literacy clerk 1A at $7.93 an hour. And 2000, I was promoted to literacy coordinator, and I couldn't be more proud or feel more blessed to have been able to work and serve for 23 years in the community in which I was born and raised, so I thank you. January also marks our 25th anniversary of the literacy program at the library, so I want to thank our volunteer tutors for their dedication, loyalty, and service to our community. We couldn't have made it 25 years without you. Ashley.
Good evening, council. Happy New Year and everyone at home. My name is Ashley Chavez. I am the library director for the Lompoc Public Library System, and I'll be finishing up the presentation with Christina tonight, so thank you for your attention.
Ashley and I are here tonight to give thanks to the city who provided a $21,186 allocation to the library for literacy in June 2012, when our only stable source of funding, State Library Literacy Grant, was being jeopardized. On behalf of the library and our tutors and students, I'd like to thank you for your support. We would also like to report to you our 2012-13 outcomes and update you on the status of our budget. With city support, the program was able to fulfill our mission to promote literacy and support lifelong learning in Lompoc by providing services which enable adults and families to improve their reading and writing skills and accomplish their goals. With 18 percent of our adult population struggling to read, coupled with the high rate of unemployment in Lompoc, there continues to be a great need for literacy services. With city support, we were able to meet these needs through three programs administered by the library. Our primary program is our adult reading program. It's the only one-on-one tutoring program in Lompoc. We target adults who lack skills for traditional classes. We target adults who face barriers to attending classes. Our adult education program here in Lompoc provides classes primarily for English as a second language and for GED students. So, our program really fills the gap for adults with little or no skills. Our program is free and confidential. Those who seek our services cannot afford $20 cost of private tutoring, and others are embarrassed or ashamed, so confidentiality is important. Our program's easily accessible. They can arrange tutoring around their schedule, mornings, noon, and night, six days a week. Services are student-centered, therefore lessons are structured around students' needs and goals. And having the program at the library in a safe, comfortable location is conducive to learning for our students. Our second program is our Families for Literacy Program. It's an early intervention program, and it helps parents to read to their children and helps parents to be their child's first and foremost teacher. It helps their children learn to read and helps their children be better prepared for school. Breaking the cycle is the only way we can make any progress towards wiping out illiteracy as we know it and pave the way for a better education for our children. Our third program is Reach Out and Read, and it's a partnership with the County of Santa Barbara. It provides free books for at-risk children, and the program promotes early literacy in the community and reaches 1,000 low-income families each year. With a 30-hour-a-week coordinator and support of 97 volunteers, we are able to operate these three programs on a shoestring budget. Having said that, we believe the city's investment in literacy was a good use of city funds. As previously mentioned, we are providing a needed service in our community at a low cost. These programs continue to be an effective method for teaching adults, and this is measured through ongoing assessments and surveys administered twice a year. Through this process, we can be accountable to our funders and confidently say that these services promote goodwill, improve education, and enhance the quality of life for our residents and, in turn, our community as a whole. Our outcome measures for the 12-13 year are as follows. We served 97 students in our program. 78 percent of those students advanced to great level or achieved a goal. There were a total of 231 goals met. 21 new tutors were trained, and 39 families participated in our FFL program. We distributed 2,032 free children's books and referred 285 patrons to other services in Lompoc. To give you a more concise idea of what students are achieving, I'll give you a breakdown of our more common goals. 28 students learned computer skills. 29 read to and helped children with homework. 23 applied, searched, and interviewed for jobs. 12 of those got a new job or a job promotion. 19 students read the newspaper, and 21 voted, volunteered, or got involved in committee issues. Volunteers are the key to our success. In 12-13, 63 volunteer tutors provided 3,160 volunteer instructional hours. 34 other volunteers provided 1,750 support hours for a total of 4,910, and at an estimated cost of about $20 per hour, it equates to $98,200 value to our community. Awesome. We have a very dedicated core group of tutors who are very passionate about their work because they are the ones that see firsthand how literacy truly changes the lives of those learners we serve. This program not only helps adults to read, but more importantly, achieve and succeed. Rhea is a student in our program. She's 31 years old, and she's from Japan. Her goals in the program were to get a job and enroll in classes at Allen Hancock. In 10 months, she is now reading newspapers, checking out library books. She wrote a resume, filled out applications, and interviewed for a job. And she met one of her goals, and she is currently enrolled at Allen Hancock College. And before I turn it over to Ashley, I'd like to read a letter to council written recently by Rhea.
Dear City Council of Lompoc, I am Rhea, a resident of Lompoc. I have been in the literacy program through the library for 10 months now. I moved to Lompoc in February 2012. I could not speak and write English very much. That's why I needed to study English. Now, I have a wonderful tutor. I always learn many things, for example, how to speak, write, read, and many more. Because of this, I was able to begin studying at Allen Hancock College this semester. My dream is to become a CPA. It is very challenging to me, and it will take a long time. I really need this literacy program to improve my English. This program is helping me with college. If not for this program, I would not have been accepted to Allen Hancock College. I'm asking to city council, please support this program so other students and I can learn. If we are successful citizens, we can help the city of Lompoc. Sincerely, Rhea.
Okay, thank you. After Christina's presentation, as she mentioned, the reason we were able to accomplish this in the last fiscal year was because of funds dedicated to the program from city councils. So, I feel like it would be remiss for me not to present to you the current status of the program and where we're currently at. So, right now, as you're aware, the literacy funds presented in the 13-15 budget were not approved, and so what we have done is shifted the program into a month-to-month status. The program is very much in jeopardy. Right now, we are believing our funds can last us until March. We currently need a little over $10,000 to finish off this fiscal year. We are attempting to meet that shortfall. We are looking into some grants. We have a couple already submitted and are looking to do more. And we are trying to step up our fundraising. We've had some really great successes so far this year, better than we expected. So, while meeting the $10,000 shortfall is possible, it is a very challenging goal for us to meet, and we're unsure if we'll be able to do it. If the program does survive the rest of the fiscal year, looking at fiscal year 14-15, the program does need approximately $25,000 annually in addition to what we already fundraised and received from the California State. So, what we've been doing in the meantime is we have formed a small committee of community members and people interested in the program, and we've been looking at new ways of running the program so that it could potentially be more sustainable. One of the challenges to this is the main cost to the program is the literacy coordinator's salary because, as she mentioned, so much of the work is done by volunteers. In order to receive funding from California State, you have to have a literacy coordinator running your program. So, it's very challenging to find a new way to run this program but still maintaining a coordinator at a level that can actually run it since that is the requirement from the state library. And currently, we receive, last year, we received about $20,000 from the state library, and this year, about $17,000. The funding from the state is stable for the most part. However, the amount they give every year changes depending on how many programs apply to it. So, that just gives you an idea of the status of the program, and Christina would be happy to answer any of your questions, listen to your comments, and take suggestions. Before the program is over, if you don't mind humor me for just one second, I know that there are a lot of people here in the audience tonight in support of this program in efforts to keep it a nice, short meeting for you guys. I'd just like everyone in the audience here who's in support of the program to just raise their hands to show you how many people were able to make it here tonight. And I thank all of you very much for attending. And a lot of these people are tutors who spend a great portion of their week tutoring and, you know, students, if you can imagine, working all day, taking care of your kids, and then still finding time to try and meet with your tutor and do your homework. So, thank you all of you very much. Thank you for listening to our presentation and your consideration.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Chavez, what would you like to see from us tonight? Obviously, I don't think we can approve the money this evening. Are you looking for us to possibly agendize something for an upcoming meeting that we can discuss this? Put it on. The budget discussions, that's not going to be coming, that will not be in time for you to get your money. So, go ahead.
There is a mid-year budget review that would be timely for your consideration if that is the direction that council wants to go.
And when is the mid-year budget review?
That is estimated to be in March. That will be in March.
Is that timely enough for you?
I think there's two distinct issues when it comes to funding. There's one, finishing out our current fiscal year, and then I assume a mid-year budget analysis would be funding any changes for 14-15. So, part of it will depend on how our fundraising and grant efforts pan out for the rest of this year. I'm not sure about, we could potentially look into the feasibility of going on a small hiatus until 14-15 if that's the direction council wants to take in regards to funding. As for what we'd like to see, obviously, if council is interested in continuing the program, a request to agendize that or review it at the budget analysis is welcomed.
Personally, I'd like to see us possibly get something on the agenda before the mid-year review, just so we could discuss it and see what we can do.
No, I'd rather wait till the mid-year review because it's not that much further away. I mean, it's a couple meetings difference rather than taking on another project. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. Ms. Galavan, have we identified anywhere where that potential fund monies could come from in the meantime, that bridge of $10,000 or so?
I've not taken a look at that, but I would like Mr. Wilkie to give us some information on the opportunity at the mid-year review to also look at this fiscal year, remaining fiscal year funding, since that is the concern of Ms. Chavez.
Councilmembers, one of the processes of the mid-year review is to not only look at the first six months of this budget cycle, but also to look at where we end up in the budget that just ended in June of 2013. We just received our annual financial statements the end of December. From that, we can provide you a much more accurate beginning point for the 13-15 budget cycle. And in addition to that, the six months activity we've had since July 1st will show us generally where we are in revenues compared to expenses, and that would give you a better idea of where we are regarding the current year budget as it stands, as well as any opportunities where we might have revenues that are coming in higher than expected or any areas where expenses might be lower than expected, where there might be some opportunities for finding that money. Right now, we have not researched and looked for pockets of money. Having said that, generally, the one location that we have money available is in the general fund reserves. So, if the council deems it necessary or important enough to dip into general fund reserves, that's always your prerogative.
Thank you, staff, for that response. Ms. Chavez, you know, I've always been in support of this program. I think I was the lone vote of five when we defunded the program essentially and didn't provide the funding. You still have my support. I mean, when it comes to high-impact, low-cost programs, you're the prime example. I mean, and all the volunteers and volunteer hours really speak to that. So, it would be my prerogative to look at pockets of funding for that $10,000 or so now and then have that larger discussion about long-term funding at the mid-year budget review. So, that's what I would be looking at right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle.
So, I'm a little confused. I appreciate that. I'm a little confused. Are you in favor, then, of agendizing it before the mid-year review? For discussion?
I would have to take staff's direction. If it's something that staff feels that they can do without needing that and just having direction this evening, or if it's something we would technically have to agendize, even if it's interdepartmental? So, then, yes, I would be in favor of agendizing it prior to the mid-year budget review.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck, I know the mayor's not, you know...
The one reason that I will go in favor with this is because the budget review will happen in March, and that's when the funding is due to run out. And to try and make this a smooth transition would not be feasible all to happen in March. So, I will go ahead and support the review for a little earlier.
And is this motion to review the $10,000 for the current year, the money for the following year, or just one of the two?
My thought is just to bring it up for, well, for discussion, and probably the minimum, the $10,000 for discussion and whatever else to come up during for the staff report.
And then the other part could be handled when we have the mid-year budget review.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I agree.
In that case, I'm with you.
The challenge with that, however, is if there is, to be blatantly honest, if there's no direction provided by staff, that there is even a potential to fund in June, the $10,000 is just as Band-Aid for a few months, which may help the program come to a close. But in your opinion, you know, that $10,000, if it isn't a bridge, is there still value to that between the March and June timeframe?
I do believe there is value. Like I said, we have formed that committee, and we are researching ways to either increase our revenue or lower our expenses, so we can continue working on that. And as always, we do consistently train new volunteers and take new students, continue matching, so the work can go on. I completely see your point. If there is not council support for funding the program in a longer-term scenario, then, you know, does three months really help that much? I would strongly, I guess, just a reminder that almost every fiscal year since 2005, funds have been provided on an emergency basis to this program. So, this has been going, this exact discussion has kind of been going on for a long time. So, I think it comes to a point where it needs to be, either there will be stable funding from the city to help us make it through the program, so that way we don't have to continue returning for emergency funding.
Thank you for your honesty. I appreciate that. But I do, I bring that up because I do see value, at least in the short term, for those three months, if that does mean wrapping up the program. But I think that we at least need to have somewhat of that conversation before the mid-year review, or at least at the beginning of the mid-year review, so you have an idea of what steps to take.
Okay.
I'd just like to add real quickly. In my experience in writing grants, one of the questions that comes up quite often is where is the local city to support? And in order for them to put their funding into the program, they'd like to see that there's some local stable support as well.
Thank you. Okay, and next, we have city administrators' report.
Yeah, we had four.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, audience, and viewers. I'd like to provide a couple updates this evening. One on the compliance policy, one on a request from the Community Action Commission, and then one final request while I'm in the seat. First, the update on the compliance policy. The city is working with council ad hoc committee, and staff will introduce a revised draft of the policy to the Human Services Commission at a public meeting on January 22 at 5:30 at City Hall, 5:30 PM. And then, at the Human Services Commission meeting on February 3 at 5:30 again at City Hall, the commission will discuss and take comment on the draft compliance policy. We anticipate bringing the item to council for consideration in March. So, I just wanted to provide that update to you. And then, to the Community Action Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from the next item that the city administrator is going to discuss, not because there is conflict of interest, but there is some question of perception, so I'll step down for the meantime.
And just so public understands, Ashley is a volunteer on the board of the Community Action Commission, so she's putting herself at a longer arms-length.
Very well. I also wanted to share that the Community Action Commission has asked the city if it would be able to reimburse expenses that were incurred by the Youth Corps program for services provided to the city in the fiscal year 12-13 that we were not able to cover as intended through the federal CDBG program. Staff, we are working on this request and preparing a report for council's consideration that will be coming to you in February. And then, my final update, if you want to come back. And last but not least, I'd like to thank you, mayor and council, city attorney and fellow department heads, city staff, and the community for your support and encouragement while I have been serving as your interim city administrator. It has been a valuable experience and an honor to serve in this position, moving city initiatives forward, providing a smooth transition to new leadership. And I'd like to ask one last thing while I'm in this position, that you join us in welcoming Patrick Wy Miller, our new city administrator, the city team, and to our community. Thank you.
You have to stand up for me to clap for you. Okay. Any staff requests and announcements beyond what we just did?
Yes. If Chief Lattipow would please join us for staff announcement.
Some of you know, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the audience, some of you are aware, I've been in the game for a long time. I've had the pleasure in many of the areas that I've served of participating in league activities. When I was hired here, now over a year and a half ago, then-city Administrator Barcelona and Councilmember Costa encouraged me to remain engaged in league activities. And for those of you who went to the league this last year and sat in on my presentation and was obviously aware that I am still doing that. When I returned from holiday break, I was pleased to be met with a presidential appointment to the league's Employer-Employ Relations Committee. So, I've been on that committee before. It's extremely active. It has a long list of priorities, two at the top, PERS reform and Work Comp. So, I'm really comfortable on that committee. I'm honored to be a presidential appointment and have the opportunity to represent our city.
Congratulations.
I'm wondering if we should commute because I'll be serving on the Tax and Revenue Committee and the Community Services Policy Committee, so we'll be in Sacramento at the same time.
And at the league, I attended the chief's presentation, and he and his partner did an outstanding job. Was very informative and came away well-informed.
Mr. Mayor, for the public, we refer to it as a league, but you may want to explain League of California Cities and, you know...
Ah, good point. The League of California Cities is an organization of 90 percent of the cities in California, and within the organization, we take some positions as an organization and lobby on behalf of those, but the biggest part of the organization is cross-training between different cities and sharing things so we don't all have to invent the wheel. And at the annual league conference, there are a series of workshops, both for staff, as Joe goes and gets smarter, and for those of us that are elected that attend so that we come away with good ideas to bring back with, because the best ideas are borrowed. And we got two good ones out of this last one that we've already adopted, so good things. Next, we have oral communications. This is your opportunity to talk to us for five minutes on any subject. If it is with regard to an item that's further down the agenda and you can stay for that, we would appreciate you talking then. If you've got to go, come on down. Anybody want to talk to us now?
Hello, my name is Bill Carlson, and I'm longtime resident of Lompoc, and I have been one of the tutors at the Adult Literacy Program for seven years now. And one thing that they failed to mention that I think is a strong statistic that we should... that they failed to mention that I think is a strong statistic that we should look at, is that of all the literacy programs in the state of California that are run through the libraries, there are only 3% that do not receive some funding from their local government. And Lompoc is one of that 3%, 3% down on the bottom. And I don't think that really reflects the way our community is, the people in our community. When I talk to them about the program, most of them say that they appreciate the program, they understand what value there is there. And it's, to me, it's a little shameful that we are a part of that 3%. And it would be nice to get back into the 97%.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope? Yep, one more. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. I wish you a Happy New Year, everyone in the audience and at home. I'm here representing State Senator Hannah Beth Daxson, her district representative. And we hold office hours in the city every month, the third Thursday of the month, from 11:30 to 1:30 in the conference room. And I just wanted to invite any of you, or department heads, or people watching at home, that would like to stop by and talk about issues that affect the city and the state. The senator is very much committed to working with all the cities within her district, and she really believes that the state and the county and the city working together will really produce the best for our communities we can. So I encourage you to stop by and let her know what you're thinking. And as the mayor said, best ideas are oftentimes borrowed, so please come by and share them, and we look forward to talking to you. That's the third Thursday of the month from 11:30 to 1:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications, and we'll come back to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items that are pretty basic. And so we put them on here and don't spend a lot of time talking about them. Number one is approval of the minutes of the December 3 and 17 meeting. Item number two is payroll in the amount of $88,000, payroll in the amount of $1,092,000, payroll in the amount of $1,474,000. There's a little more, because we had three weeks between council meetings. A voucher register for $703,000, a voucher register for $513,000, electronic payments in the amount of $2.3 million, and that's generally mostly for our electric purchase, and then manual checks for $2,685. Item number three, the second reading and approval of the ordinance 159813 banning the concession of synthetic spices and/or synthetic bath salts. And item number four, the adoption of the aggressive solicitation ordinance and the accompanying public education program. Is there an item a council member would like to have pulled from this list? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion?
A move we accept, consent.
And a second?
A second.
And is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? That passes four, zero and one absent. And now we have some important things to do. If you would all join me? Teresa, if you would join us over here. On behalf of, oops, on behalf of CHAP TV, I'll be in trouble if I don't speak into the microphone, so I'm going to go over here. On behalf of the council of the city of Lompoc, in appreciation for your dedication and commitment to the city of Lompoc as our interim administrator, we want to give you this small token of our appreciation. If it really represented all that you'd done, we wouldn't be able to get it through the door. But we thought that was impractical, and the chief told us if we brought something that big in, that there'd be a fire code violation. So this is one that was a little more practical. Thank you so very much for all you did. Nah, we're done. All right. And next, don't go away, Patrick. Come on back. They're going to swear you in, right? The city clerk will administer the oath of office.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
Without any reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially
Discharge the duties and responsibilities
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Of the office of city administrator
Of the office of city administrator.
Of the city of Lompoc to the best of my ability
Of the city of Lompoc to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If I may, Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for your welcoming and acceptance. I want to state first and foremost how much I appreciate the confidence and trust that's being placed. And I don't take that lightly. And the oath I took and my commitment to you is still sincere and true on that. And I'll work my hardest to do everything I can to help improve the community. It obviously takes the community. It takes more than just the council, it takes more than its staff. It takes an entire community to move the city forward. And so we appreciate, we've got great days ahead and looking forward to this. And especially, thank Teresa so much for stepping in the interim and the gap and looking after things so well in the meantime. And I am just thrilled to be working with a very talented group of people, very talented staff. I wish I could just share with you how blessed we are to have some of the fine professions we do that are working hard for you each day here at the city. And just looking forward to great days ahead. And thank you so much for allowing me the time and this opportunity.
Thank you. And now we're going to have the break. But remember, if you weren't in the front three rows, no cupcakes. Just kidding. We'll head for the lobby. Can't find your seat. Find another one you like. This evening, we have some folks here from Habitat for Humanity that were going to give us an update, but I didn't get them queued up right. So now we're going to have their update slightly out of order. Come on down, guys.
My name is Richard Brown, Executive Director, Habitat for Humanity, Northern Santa Barbara County. And I owe you a quarterly report on our progress through 308 North K Street. And on the 31st, I was here. There were a couple of pieces of paper that had to be notarized and signed, and I got that done. And I was assured that everything was completed to get our permit. And Monday, I was, yesterday, came down here to visit with Linda Wirtman prior to this meeting, and again camped out over there at the desk and said, "Well, let's get the permit issued." And I got the money on file here, so we can get it paid for. But they're just not ready. So that's our issue. We're still waiting for that building permit, and we're ready to go. Got our volunteers lined up, and so I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have, but that's where we're stuck.
Did they estimate when they would be able to issue it to you?
Well, I was told they would send me an email and let me know what the status was. And I thought I was going to get it Monday afternoon, but it's, I checked before coming down here, and it's still not available.
Probably the issue might be we lost our longtime building official on the 26th or 27th, because he went down south. So I think everybody's trying to pick up the pieces and go forward right now. So they might be a couple more days beyond what they had anticipated.
I think that that is a, that is a big loss, yes.
Yeah, it was. But we're happy that he gets to go home and live in his house again. So, good things. Any questions at this time from the council? Thanks for the update. And just, you know what, when you get it, if you'll just let one of us know, then we'll share it, and you won't have to come back over here to say, "I got it, I got it."
Okay.
All righty?
Thanks a million. Appreciate the help.
No problem. Okay, now we're going to move on to item number six, adopt, adoption of resolution 589014, modifying section 3.00 of the city's master fee schedule and introducing ordinance 159914 to authorize collection of certain fire service fees and the authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Fire Recovery USA. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what's left in the audience, the small but the mighty, and those of you at home. This is consistent with discussions we've been having for a while. And a little piece of history, I started digging into our fee structure a few months ago, and realized that there were fees on the books that were not being applied, there were fees that we hadn't done a time and motion on. And so staff immediately set forward doing a rather in-depth analysis of all the services we provide. But it actually started before I started looking at it. Many public agencies, upon the passage of Proposition 13, heard from the voters loud and clear that they expected us to be a little bit more like a business. And many agencies, including some that I had the pleasure of leading, started transitioning to more of a fee-for-service model in order to fulfill the mandate of providing services while living within our means. And that's basically what this proposal does. We have an established fee schedule. The city's had it for a long time. It's not been updated for a while. And that's why we're here this evening. Before I go further, on page five of six of attachment two, there is a typo. The staff vehicle would not be by the hour, that particular unit only is by the day. That schedule is meant to incorporate the FEMA rate schedule, which are the approved rates by which we're reimbursed under disasters and mutual aid. It's defensible, it will withstand an audit, and that's what we're proposing. So that should be, that one only should be per day or portion thereof.
I'm sorry, which one was that? Can you repeat?
The staff vehicle, the $95 an hour. Be pretty tough to get more for my Tahoe than we do for the fire engine. So as we worked through this rather extensive analysis, in essence, what we did was a time and motion study, where we took the list of fees, we looked at fees from other jurisdictions, and I highlighted a couple just because they're close. But in reality, Stan Hart and myself looked at fee schedules from throughout the state of California. And then we said, "Okay, here's the fee. What does it really take to deliver the service that the end product is a permit, or a plan check, or an inspection?" We applied the cost of the individual or the rank structure that does the service, and what came out at the other end was the recommended rate. You'll find, as you take a look at the examples, which is rather interesting, I've given you in attachment one, a normal, an acceptable fee schedule from the, from what the cost recovery folks have found from the insurance industry. When you go to attachment two, what you'll see is a side-by-side comparison of what our current fee is, what the proposed fee is, and in some cases, a new category, because we were missing, quite frankly, we were missing items that we should have been cost recovering, in my opinion. I'm pleased to say that as we applied this methodology, some of the fees actually went down. We could not justify, using this methodology, we could not justify the rate that's in the current schedule. Some of the fees did go up, because we were under-collecting for the amount of work it takes, particularly in the area of plan checks and the rechecks, and then the inspection process it takes to get to a final. So some of those you're going to see an increase in. We did embrace, upon recommendation of some in my industry, consideration of adding in cost recovery for response. And those are within the schedule. In my research of numerous agencies that do charge, some of them are considerably higher than what we're proposing. And even the example that was given to us by the cost recovery company as to what they see as far as the industry norm within the insurance industry for reimbursement, ours are lower than what they recommended. Again, we applied the methodology and a nexus that we felt was fair and defensible to our customers. When we looked at the response fees, particularly in the area of vehicle accidents and active fire suppression, we found that some agencies only build insurance companies, some agencies build the citizen and then let the citizen refer the agency to the insurance company. And so they're really, it's kind of, there's no norm. It's whatever the public body sets as policy. I had extensive discussion with our city attorney as far as the statutory authorization within the state of California that allows us to recover the actual costs of providing services. And he pointed out to me that it doesn't specifically use response to traffic accidents and fires as an example. However, it appears that there are well over 100 agencies throughout the state that are in fact charging for those levels of response. During our joint meeting, we discussed the funding of the fire prevention position. And at that time, I shared with you that my preliminary analysis, based on some work we were already doing on the fees, is we could possibly recover 75% or more. In my projections that are in the fiscal impact of the fee staff report, the only projections I'm using for that are the permit fees and the response fees and the false alarm fees. I'm not, and the emergency response fees. What's not in there is the projection, because right now it's kind of hard to peg, is what we would actually generate as a result of plan checks, tenant improvements, sprinkler inspections, and things of that nature. What we're seeing is it basically was flat. inspections and things of that nature. What we're seeing is it basically was flat. And now we're starting to see a climb. So I prefer to, whenever I bring items such as this to council, I prefer to take an extremely conservative approach to my projections. And as the city manager, city administrator and I discussed earlier, it's better to under-project than over. So I'm confident that we will hit these numbers. In the staff report, it talks about a ramp-up. And again, in reaching out to industry, they have said that a majority of the cases they've seen, it takes a ramp-up period. You don't see full realization of projections until year two. Do I believe it will take us that long? No, I do not. Because my plan, should you move forward with the recommendation or give me alternate direction, is once we leave this evening, we will immediately start retooling so that when we legally can implement the fees, they'll already be in the system. We will already have done the training and will already be on board with the cost recovery firm. The reason for the recommendation of this cost recovery firm is they are the only one that's turnkey. Turnkey meaning our current record management system at the fire department talks directly to their system. They are compatible with what's called Firehouse. So every day, the crew goes out and does a permit inspection. That information's automatically transmitted directly to the cost recovery folks. They, by either email or hard copy, will submit the invoice to the business. And once it's paid, they'll transmit that message into the Firehouse program. The Firehouse program will then generate the permit that will be delivered to the business. The way it works today is the fire crew goes out or the fire marshal goes out or Stan goes out, does the inspection, turns in paperwork, paperwork comes over to finance, generates a bill, bill comes back, and then eventually they get a permit. This will be much quicker, much more efficient. Due to the projected volume that, that we're, we believe we'll see because of what's not been going on, we don't, we don't believe that a, a system as that efficient can be replicated for the minimal charges that the cost recovery folks are proposing. So, you know, to kind of sum it up, which is what you're used to from me, I obviously go off script on my staff reports, but believe me, I have it here, is I follow the direction. I've brought you back a recommendation to, to overhaul our fees, for lack of a better term, to consider implementing the fees as proposed with the amendment of the per day or, or portion thereof, and allow us to move forward with the agreement with Fire Recovery USA. And I'm sure there'll be questions and possible comments.
Chief, could you just, I know you've reached out to some other departments that have this in place. Could you just mention how they felt about it?
Um, actually-
Fire Recovery USA?
Yeah, I put Stan on the phone to the client list and every, and, you know, I had him just randomly call. And every one of them gave high marks to this particular firm. Extremely professional. They deliver exactly what they say they deliver, and they deliver it in a timely manner.
Those were the folks that we met at, at the League of Cities, too, weren't they?
Yes.
Yeah. I was very impressed. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, chief as usual. Excellent report. Thank you very much. Usually doesn't leave any questions, but in this case. No, I, actually, I did have a couple of questions. I spoke to you earlier, but just for clarification for the public because I was confused and some public may have been confused. In respect to the fire recovery, response recovery, I was, when I read this, I was under the assumption that this fee was for the cleanup and not for the actual putting out the fire. But you've told me that it is actually for both, for both combined, combined in that fee. Would you clarify?
Right. The intent of the proposal is that we would recover 400 and, I forgot the amount. I think it's 40966 or something like that, for the suppression response. The, that would only be for a working fire, which out of 3,600 calls a year, roughly 20 or so are actually working fires.
Okay. And then also, because some of the confusion was, myself being a, or any one of us being a property owner, some of us assumed that that's what our property taxes are for, to, your crew respond to put out the fire in my garage or in my, in my house. And now there's going to be a fee for that. So could you let us know why?
Well, and, and that's certainly a valid question. I respect that question very much. I, I go back to Prop 13 where we were basically directed to live within our means. As the recession hit and property values started to drop, we were still, we were still compelled to maintain a standing army, if you will. There's a philosophy out there that the current revenue structure that's in place to fund public service is outdated and was designed to really provide an extremely basic level of service, which we've surpassed. So if you subscribe to that, then the standing army, once they respond, they would do some cost recovery, minimal cost recovery in this case for the response. The other interesting dynamic that I came across, and actually, the chairman of our Public Safety Commission brought this to my attention, and that he did some additional research and found it in other cases, embedded within your fire insurance policy is actually a reimbursement, a line item reimbursement for fire suppression response. And it averages, it just depends on the policy. I think Roy shared with me that his is about $500. Some of them are more than that. So as I continue to do research on that particular item, that is in fact true. Do the insurance companies like to publicize it? No. So that, I believe, that would be appropriate for us, just like any other service. If, if it's covered in your policy, we should recover.
Okay, thank you. And then one last thing. I'm glad, I was glad that you said you, you usually under-project instead of over-project, which I'm, I'm glad and I believe you do. Five, six years from now, none of us will probably be up here. You may still be here.
[laughing]
No. But there'll be, there'll probably be new council members. There could be a new fire chief. And we may forget that this new fire captain maybe, or was going to be partially paid for, potentially paid for by this study. So could we expect a periodic status report on how we're doing?
Not only could you expect it, you should expect it, and, and I will deliver that, much like the request you made for routine updates on the status of the objectives in the master plan. When we get to that fire marshal staff report, you'll find that the recommendation is, and I'll get the correct terminology when I get into that staff report, is that we set up a special account so we would be able to reconcile.
Good. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Chief, I got to tell you, I was really surprised when I read this, that the majority of the fees went down. I think that's really important to put out, that what we're really trying to implement here is, is a reduction in most fees and the inclusion of some new ones. So we're setting a base there. And from '09 to '13, to have a reduction in fees just hit me as strange. And I thought that was really important to put out to people to know.
I, by now, you pretty much know the way I work. And I believe it's important to be transparent while building a sustainable organization. And if, if our math was not good before, not saying that it wasn't, but once we applied this methodology, I was pleased to see them come down.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I have a couple of questions. My first is, can you give me an example of a false alarm? I know the first and second false alarm, there is no fee, but within a 12-month period, the third or fourth, there is a fee associated.
False alarm, we've actually had a false alarm fee for quite some time. But the origination of false alarm fees goes back several years. And it's the intent for the, the business owner to keep their system in good check. If, and that's why we give them the first two gratis. The intent from that point on, and we have had on occasion, and I won't give the address, and it's nobody that's in this building today, but we had one business that had no less than six false alarms in less than a week. Now, understand a fire false alarm, because we always err on the side of caution, the fire false alarm gets a full response every single time. So every time that alarm came in, County 51, two engines from the city and an engine from Vandenberg rolled. So the intent of the false alarm fee is, hey, you know, there's something wrong with your system. Get ahold of your vendor. Please get it cleaned up. We're going to give, give you one more pass. And from that point on, we're going to charge. And that fee's actually been in the city system for a while.
Thank you for clarifying that. My next question is kind of a silly question. You deleted one of the fees, and I didn't know what it was. There was a fee for sanitarium?
Yeah. Well, that's an old, it's an old term for a mental hospital. And some of us are old enough to remember taking patients to sanitariums. Not that I've ever been a patient in a sanitarium. But I was reviewing this and I went, "Wow, I haven't seen that one for a while." So we struck it out.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I had no idea. I was just curious. But I appreciate the diligence because I believe that you're exactly right. We shouldn't have that one in there. And my one question, there's a $10 fee for an incident report. I believe that's a new one. And who pays for that incident report?
The person requesting the report. I was surprised that we didn't have that fee because almost everybody does. And that's really a minimal fee. And, and the, the way this works is somebody will either call or come to the station and request a copy of an incident report. Sometimes they have the correct date, sometimes they don't. We do the research and then we produce a copy for them and/or their insurance company.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think on the false alarm side, the chief and I had a discussion of this when he first got here. And I said, "Start charging this darn fee because we, I'm familiar with a business that used to be across the street from where my business was." And I think the fire department was there every week for a year. But, you know, the chief, bless his heart, said, "Well, we're going to go out and work with these people and we're going to get this number of false alarms down. And then we're going to charge the fee." And, and I've noticed the number of false alarms in the, the weekly report has ratcheted down dramatically. So, good job on that. Chief Ralston wasn't here long enough ago to remember, but once upon a time, we didn't have a false alarm fee in the, in the police department. And they were rampant. And they started the program of charging for false alarms. And again, they were too free. And all of a sudden, we had about an 85% drop in false alarms. So sometimes you just have to charge somebody a few bucks to get them to realize they need to fix their system. Or call, get it, to them to get on the company that isn't fixing their system is more of the, more of the call. Are there any other questions at this time?
I can make one last comment.
Sure. We're going to go to oral communication and we'll, we'll give you another chance to, go ahead.
The Public Safety Commission. Because this was brought up at the joint meeting. Once the staff reports were done and in your hands, I sent the links out to the Public Safety Commission to advise them that we were moving forward on this this evening. And one of our commissioners is here tonight. Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
He snuck in.
I didn't see you come in. I'm sorry, man.
He, he missed the cupcakes.
[laughing]
Okay. Well, I would invite the Public Safety Commissioners first for oral communications. That means you come on down. Yeah.
Hi.
No, he didn't do it. I did it. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Good evening. Ann McCarthy with the Public Safety Commission. And I support everything he just said.
Boy, she's tough. You want to get a word in or you want to support what she said?
[inaudible]
Yeah. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to talk to us on this subject? Come on down.
Evening, Mayor Lynn and Council. Will Skyler, live in Long Po. Actually, maybe two questions and then a comment. And I know she asked about the company. This sounds like maybe this company was just selected. There was not an RFP sent out for it?
I think the issue is they're the only ones that have the interface with our existing software system.
So it would be that they were a sole source.
They were a sole source because they had the ability to work with our software.
Okay, all right. First thing that bothers me, or, because I know a lot of times when there's a situation in Long Po, an ambulance and a fire will respond. And let's say that the call in this hypothetical case was really an ambulance call. Would the city also bill for the fire truck even though it was an ambulance call at 4:50?
No. This has to do, well, if the fire truck and the ambulance went to a fire, the answer would be yes. If it went to a medical call, the answer would be no. I think, have I got that right, chief?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get in trouble.
Yeah. No, actually, we already get paid for those responses. So it would be inappropriate for us to charge again. And the manner in which we are paid is via the contract between AMR and the county and the subcontract with the city. Right now, we're reimbursed approximately $65,000 a year for those EMS responses. So it would have been inappropriate for me to propose that.
If you don't mind me interjecting a question about that topic, Mr. Skyler, is that, well, but it's for the chief. Does that $65,000, it obviously doesn't come close to covering the cost of service, though. Is that?
The intent of the $65,000 originally, I inherited this contract. The intent of the $65,000 originally was to reimburse us for supplies, continuing education, and some of our in-house training programs. And, and right now, it is keeping pace.
Thank you.
And the other, I noticed that if it was a standard traffic accident, there was a fee. And then if hazmat was needed, it, now, it, as 4:50 and 6:50 comes to my mind right now. Do you add the two of those together? It's whatever the higher, or, whatever the higher calling would be, would be what the rate would be at then?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other comment, you know, it sounds like a lot of people are in favor, but I believe that the chief made a comment that approximately 100 California cities already do this. Well, I think the point there is there's over 500 California cities. So, you know, not very many of them are doing it. So is there, you know, there might be their reasons for not doing it. I don't know what they are, but something that crossed my mind. Thank you.
Anyone else for oral communications? Seeing no one, we'll come back to the chief.
The vehicle accident response is 40966 plus the cost of disposal, if it's, if there are fluids. Without fluids, it's 40966.
Okay. And just to confirm what I, what we, I talked to you about the other day, the reason this vendor was selected, we could, was because their compatibility with our system. And there isn't anyone else around that is, that we were aware of?
Yeah, the, my friends in the finance department put me through a pretty good exercise. And in doing my due diligence, I discovered there's, there's really only three companies that do this well. And this is the only one that is so seamless with our operation.
Okay. And any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. There's no mandate for an RFP in this case, though, due to a contract amount. Is that what the cutoff was? Or was that just an internal decision?
Well, the way the contract is written, there's actually no payments to the vendor. So because there's no disbursement of money for this, there wasn't a need for our RFP. They, they will retain funds that they collect, but there's no direct payment by the city to the vendor.
Interesting. Okay. Would there be any case where the, the city would pay the vendor for anything?
Not the way the contract, sorry. Not the way the contract is written. It's taken, it's taken out of the fee. What do they call that?
Taken out of the collections.
Yeah. Like a collection agency does.
Okay. I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking is then there's an assumption that they will be receiving a certain amount in money. will be receiving a certain amount in money based on the fees we've collected in the past, or potential fees we may collect in the future. My assumption is that's the reason they would sign a contract, is they would be anticipating these funds.
There is an assumption on their part that they will generate a certain amount of money, but it's solely dependent on our call volume and the information we submit to them.
And if they don't receive that?
There's no guarantee. There is a requirement, and they've actually offered to omit it, there is a requirement that we have at least six billing runs a year. We anticipate there'll be many more than six billing runs a year.
What is the, what is a billing run?
Billing run is basically, we transmit information, and they, they generate the bills. We anticipate there'll be probably more like a billing run at least every single week.
Okay, interesting. Okay, I'd be interested to hear if, if, if anything deviated in that sense. Maybe I'm just not as familiar with these kinds of contracts, and my assumption is, my faith is with you that you did it correctly, so, but I would just be interested in following that.
And this vendor, I'm very pleased with the response so far from the vendor. Our city attorney offered several amendments to the contract, and they hesitated not one bit to accommodate our concerns.
Great, and the only other thing, I guess I wanted to address, was that vehicle accident fee of 40966, obviously, the assumption is that when someone has vehicle insurance, car insurance, this fee would be covered by the insurance company.
And, and car, and vehicle insurance is required in the state of California, so yeah, that is the assumption.
Right, and so the only person who would really incur this fee personally is if you didn't have insurance, which?
If you were driving without insurance, then you would be billed, as the way it's written right now, an uninsured driver would get a bill, just as they do from the tow service, the ambulance, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion. Councilmember Lingle?
I move that we accept staff recommendations.
I'll second. With the correction that the chief made to page five? Yeah. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? That passes five, zero, and one absent. And now we'll move on to item number seven, review, discussion, and consideration of the fire department master plan priorities.
Well, unless you really want me to, I'm not going to go into a whole lot of depth, because you've seen most of this before. Consistent with direction given at the November 12th joint meeting, staff has brought you back recommendations for priorities for the goals and objectives contained within the master plan that you adopted on that day. Staff realizes that some of the timelines may not be met due to fiscal constraints. However, as I shared with you during that meeting, I believe it's important to get these items up on the wall, so as we move through the budget process, and funds do become available, at least we have a roadmap. I would like to point out that we've already started tracking some of the data that's in here, so where, where you see within the staff report where it says that we're already engaged, we're already doing these things, we're already taking a look at prioritizing when, on a non-emergency basis, the apparatus is in one or more areas of the city, tonight was an example. Normally, I like to have both engine companies here whenever possible, however, based on the recommendation in the report, the only engine company that came in this evening was the one that's responsible for this area. So we're already taking a good, hard look at what the rigs do, and where they're placed on a non-emergency basis. We've already got the crews paying closer attention to their turnout time, and I'm pleased we've already shared, shaved 12 seconds off of that, we're not on the goal yet, but some of it is dependent on technology. Our travel time, it is what it is. Until we get the grant for the optocom that I've mentioned in here, you know, I'm not going to have the guys go busting intersections at 50 miles an hour, it's not safe for our citizens or our crews. Several of the A priorities and some of the Bs, well, several of the As are actually accomplishable with little or no investment. However, some of them will take an investment, and the ones that really jump out at us are the upgrade to the computer aided dispatch system, the upgrade to the fire station alerting system, the addition of dispatchers. All those are directly linked to several of the objectives relative to call processing, turnout time, and some of the recommendations that are contained within the master plan about closest resource first, et cetera. Effective response force, you've heard this from me before, the effective response force that's recommended within the master plan is consistent with standards, it's consistent with what we see throughout the country. We can't get there until we either move Vandenberg Air Force Base in closer, because they're counted as part of our effective response force, or we're able to follow the master plan's recommendation of adding additional personnel so we can staff our truck company, which is a great recommendation. However, if you had the money today, I would have to say, could we hold off? Because the facilities simply won't accommodate that many more people. It's, it's over in the C priorities, as is the fire station. The, the recommendation to sit down with the sheriff's office and talk to them about contracting, and we discussed that quite a bit during the joint meeting, Chief Ralston and I have discussed it, and there's an interesting dynamic there, and it goes back to the recommendation in the master plan that the chief discontinue using dispatchers for female jailers. Well, when Chief Ralston and I first discussed that recommendation, it quickly became apparent to me that that was not practical, and probably not financially feasible for a really long time. If we were to contract with the sheriff's office, and even if it came in $100,000, $200,000 less than what it currently costs, all that savings would be eaten up, because the chief would need a female jailer. So that's probably one of the objectives that we may recommend fall off. But I strongly recommend that staff bring back to you in the next budget cycle, the fire department funding three additional dispatchers as we move forward in cost sharing, the dispatch center with the police department. The B, and I know you wanted me, you would prefer that I make the reserve program an A, I pushed it into a B simply because of timing, and the ability to implement in a time, to fully implement, the term "fully implement" is important here, in, in the time of less than 12 months is almost, nothing is impossible in my world, but that one would be tough. So that got moved into a B priority, it's also got a price tag on it. The fire station recommendation that's in here, that's projected out at, at five years or so, is probably a realistic prediction or projection, because it gives us time to recover, but also gives us time to plan. There have been recommendations brought forward that we look at other parcels within the community that might serve us better. We've got some great conceptual designs out of the Cal Poly students, but now what we really need is a, is a space analysis done by a professional. I've been talking with RRM out of San Luis Obispo, they specialize in fire stations, they've probably done two or three dozen over the last few years, and my very first question is, Candace, do you think you've got a cookie cutter that we could simply drop the design into, into Lompoc? She says, yes, but first we need to do an analysis of how much space you really need, and as some of you may recall, I like to plan out 20 years. So in looking at correspondence between our city attorney, Brad, and myself, it appears that that analysis would justify for expenditure of impact fees, and it would run somewhere under $40,000. So that's a very high flight, it's all contained. I think probably the most important part of the staff report is the fiscal impact And hat, my hat is always off to Brad and his team, because they help me navigate through the fiscal impact, and come up with some really, really articulate descriptions, and this time is, is no different. So the fiscal impact section is on page, it starts on page 16 of 18, it lumps the priorities, it gives you some projections as far as cost, and I believe the most important part of the fiscal impact section is on the top of page 18. And I rarely read directly from the staff report, but if you'll indulge me. The initial point of the fiscal impact section, and the adoption of these goals and objectives, would not result in a direct fiscal impact to the city. Ultimately, the fiscal impact would depend on direction from council regarding the specific objectives, whether none are implemented or some are all approved for implementation. The actual fiscal impact of any specific implementation recommendation would be estimated based on detailed operational and fiscal analysis, including possible requests for information, requests for qualification, or requests for proposal. Accepting the proposed objectives does not spend money, because even if you were to accept the proposed objectives tonight, which obviously, from staff's perspective, we hope you do, we would still be returning to council for consideration of expenditures, because as we look at this, we would have to ask you for a budget amendment to accomplish some of the As, particularly in the area of the CAD and the station alerting system. So with that, I've, I've been too long-winded on this staff report, I apologize, and I'll attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Look, chief, just, this signal preemption equipment, what does that cost per light, roughly? If you don't know, I mean, I was just curious, is it something that you could phase in on a light outside of, like, north and H where Engine 2 comes out of? That would be a very likely light you would want to do first, and then what does Caltrans say about it?
You know, you, over the years, Caltrans has grown to accept these, particularly the new technology that we're proposing. To do all 26 signals, it's a quarter of a million dollars, turnkey. I do have a proposal on my desk for a phased approach, much like what you're laying out on some more critical intersections. However, when we go for grants, it's better to go for the whole piece, and then if we don't get the grant, reconfigure, if you will. So the, the grant that, that we've applied for, that if accepted, would have to come back to you, is for a quarter of a million dollars to do the entire project. We did, we were lucky enough, at no cost, we had, we were able to avail ourselves to a third-party review of the application before we pushed send, and the third-party reviewer said, the financial section, where we basically poured our heart out and said, we can't afford to buy this without the grant, was one of the strongest they've ever seen. So our fingers are crossed that within the next six months, we'll hear that we were awarded that grant, and I won't have to come back and ask it a piecemeal.
Your opinion, these response times and everything we have, is this good enough information for Phase 2 of the general plan?
The objectives, yeah. The goals and objectives are.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The possible move of the fire station 2, I know it's, it's Priority C, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I'd like to see us, you know, maybe keep it C, but you had mentioned that you're, you could have a cookie cutter design that may or may not work, you have to do some work to the fee, see if it would. I really like that idea, because we know, I think most of us know that Santa Maria basically had a new fire station built, because they had a shovel-ready project, and if federal money became available, they built a new fire station. So if, if we could get something sooner than later, and if some money came available, we could possibly implement it right away, so.
And absent discouragement from council, the city administrator, that's exactly the direction I would like to head, is start chunking away at this elephant a piece at a time, do the space analysis, and then make a determination whether or not there is a cookie cutter out there, and how much those plans would cost, and then if a grant, if one of the shovel-ready grants turns up, which stranger things have happened, we would be ready with architectural drawings, siding, et cetera.
Good. Thank you. As usual, great report. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Yeah, it was, it was very helpful, very easy to understand, attachment one summarized it all, and that was really helpful for me to look through and kind of keep referencing back, so I really appreciate that. My, the one statement I wanted to make was simply, you know, you, you'd mentioned that there's no fiscal impact essentially in approving this, but I think that we are all very aware that we don't want to approve this with no intention of taking further action, right? I mean, we want to put the, our money where our mouth is, and so I just, I, you know, I want to urge council to really consider that, and, and understand that if we approve this tonight, we have to be committed to following through, in my opinion, understanding that, of course, situations change, and hopefully, funding sources are created or found. But I, I just want you to know that in my perspective, that I think that there is a commitment here with, with passage of this item.
And I understand that, should you embrace the recommendation, this also sets the priorities for me as I look for grants.
That's helpful, and I'm very excited to hear that you submitted that grant application, fingers crossed for that one as well, but thank you for all the work you've done.
I guess I, and I, and particularly with regard to what Councilmember Costa said, I have some concerns, and I think the one area that I would like to do a little differently would be to take all of the items that deal with dispatch and make those a B priority, and have you circle back with the police chief, and come to an agreement on what, what's going to work best for both of you, because this is really targeted and works best for fire, and I, I know what you're after there, chief, you know, you got the white shirt on, he's got the blue shirt on, so I got this going on. But I think we need to, to circle back and look at that. I know that the chief has been doing quite a bit of work on the, the upgrade to the CAD system, and what they had initially thought might happen isn't happening, and now we have Patrick, who's going to be a great negotiator, and he's going to go get it for half-price, he told me. And that would give you a little more time, and, because I don't want to commit to something there that I'm really, really positive we can't get done right now in this timeframe from a financial standpoint, but I don't want to see it as a C priority, it's a little too far out, I think it really ends up being a B, so it's in the next budget cycle. And I, you know, you know how strong I am about the, the reserves, but you explained to me in great detail that it would be bad if they slept in the hall, so I got that part, so.
The, and I, and I respect everything you just said. The, my reality, if you will, is some of the objectives, some of the performance objectives, are directly linked to upgrading the CAD, the station alerting system, and having an appropriate number of dispatchers, and I know you know that, but I feel better verbalizing it.
Yeah, I, I know that, I just know what it costs, and I know I don't have the money to make that happen, and I know the financial issues that we're going to face in another 18 months, and that already keeps me awake at night, so if I added another $400,000 on, I don't think I'd sleep at all. So my recommendation to the council, and I'll be willing to make the motion, would be that we take all of the dispatch items and make them a B priority, and direct the chief to work with the chief, and come back to us in, in the next budget cycle with regard to those. The rest of it, I think is great, and, you know, I still want the reserves yesterday, but you've convinced me, I'm, I'm sold. Councilmember Starbuck? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Costa, were you next?
Yeah, thank you, Mary Lynn. Just for the record, for those at home, I don't believe the city administrator promised that to the mayor, in case they didn't. that to the mayor in case they didn't, in case that joke wasn't heard at home, it was a joke. Um, your microphone.
Councilmember Murph, thank you.
Wasn't on, just wanted to clarify that. And, you know, I think the mayor does bring up a good point here, but my assumption was, and you said it in your report, that there was some cross-communication with the police department in regards to dispatch. And in your opinion, and I can ask either of you, I mean, is it just going to come down to asking for us to fund additional positions?
We haven't asked to, to fund additional positions at this point, but it is certainly something that we would entertain in order to expand the dispatch center.
The, the initial ask will be for the necessary funds to make up the shortfall in upgrading the CAD system and the station alerting system after some additional research.
And I think just, and I've had some conversations with the, with both chiefs on it. And one of the issues right now is our current CAD system only has two workstations. So, hiring another dispatcher wouldn't do us much good because they wouldn't have anywhere to sit and connect. So, the, the next step in the process is finding whatever CAD system we're going to go to, replacing the hardware, and then bringing in the software. And then you could start talking about adding personnel if in fact we have some money at that point in the future. But just, just the act of getting the CAD system that will directly connect with the station, that the alerting system at the fire stations has a huge advantage in terms of time savings.
I definitely understand that connection and the need for the CAD systems is primary. But Mayor, the reason I was asking that is because, you know, of these goals and objectives that you've set in that priority, I know that you, you understand the fiscal situation of the city. So, with that in mind, do you feel like you consider that enough when saying something should be an A priority, knowing full well that it may not get the A priority treatment, so to speak, because of the funding situation? Or is that not what changed your mind on some of these things? I know that it, it did impact your, your decision on some things where you knew we wouldn't have the funds in the short term.
I, I set the priorities to align with key objectives and to immediately address, if possible, some of our shortfalls.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject, we also, we do have three workstations. Two of them are console workstations. The third is piecemealed together right now. We don't have a, an actual console desk for that position. We're waiting on the state to be able to provide the, the console funding to replace all of our seats in our dispatch center so that we will have three full, fully functional seats.
But that will be three, not six?
Correct.
But that gives you three people in there 24/7.
I see, which is now currently staffed by?
By two. Yeah, the, we would like to have the third workstation completed so that we could expand to a, a full three on-duty operation. Right now, we're just working with two 24/7.
And those are, is it the same shifts as a firefighter? That's why you need three employees, or are they 12-hour shifts?
They're, they work a 12-hour shift and we staff it 24/7. Too deep right now, we'd like to go three. And the reason for the expansion is because of the call volume between police and fire and the side responsibilities that our dispatchers have with dealing with our female prisoners at the jail, having to provide matron services to be able to search female prisoners.
And Chief, would you speak to the triage dispatch and why that would drive three rather than two via you?
Yeah, there's another objective in here that we do a better job of screening the calls so we don't send apparatus screaming code three to unnecessary calls. Let's, let's call it emergency medical dispatch. And it is, it's a nationally-accepted method of triaging the calls, utilizing initial questioning, and then in some cases, pre-arrival, pre-arrival medical instructions. We would need an additional dispatcher because that actually hangs that dispatcher up a little longer than normal. So, once we make that move to that level of dispatch with three folks all the time, then we're able to move forward in implementing that triaging. I, I did, and Councilmember Costa, I did look at the fiscal impact of what we were projecting. And when we started doing this, we actually thought we were going to be able to fund the station upgrades and the CAD upgrade for much cheaper. I know we've been discussing the mid-year and, you know, we're currently looking at our budget to actuals to see if we, we, the fire department, have any savings whatsoever that can go to the station alerting system sooner than later. So, it's not like I ignored it. It's like, how else am I going to do it?
Well, and I think some of these things kind of grew in cost as we went along too from the initial look.
Yeah, the challenge of our budget system, but it's okay. We'll make it work.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, Chief, you know what? I'm going to kind of support you on this because under your goal B here, the improved dispatch call processing performance, you've listed some of the things that need to happen. You've given yourself 12 months to come up with a, a plan on it. The next thing is the staffing level of dispatchers, which you've given yourself, you know, an additional year behind that. I, I mean, I think it, it falls into a step process there. The only thing in this whole improved dispatch call processing performance that I personally don't want to get involved in is the purchasing dispatch service from Santa Barbara County. It reminds me of going back and trying to contract fire again. I think that no matter how much work we do, it's not going to be to our benefit. I truthfully believe that hiring the additional dispatchers would solve our problem along with the CAD system. And I think that these, like you say, are just goals and measurements, and I think that we, as a council, should back this with you.
Certainly, and that is, as everything on this staff report, a policy decision.
Yeah, I agree with you, Councilmember Starbuck. I don't, I don't want to go down spending time again going through dispatch with the county. We lose dispatchers to them now because they pay a lot more than we do. And at the end of the day, we're still going to have to have one person here, so the, the savings to us would be one dispatcher. And, you know, it's just, we, we had grand hopes for contracting fire with the county and they kind of led us down a long rosy road. And at the end, it was another $2.5 million. And I, I don't want to go through all that work again for our staff because you guys need to focus on the things that you've got here that we can actually control and move forward, so.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I think I will respectfully disagree. I think it's something that we absolutely need to look into, whether it's feasible or somewhat feasible at this point. There is some question about that, but I think that in our due diligence and figuring out how to be most effective and efficient with the monies that we do have, it is something that needs to be looked into, however briefly perhaps.
Councilmember Lingle, you want to chime in on that subject?
Sure. We'll have a nice two-two, two-two vote here. I agree it's worth looking into. I do have some concerns about it. I talked to the chief earlier about it. In the event of a citywide major catastrophe here, I asked him what would happen if we don't have a dispatch here and? Well, no, nothing.
Now, we have the command post.
You may want to address what we had talked about there because that was one of my concerns.
The Emergency Operations Center actually has a communications room and we're anxious for the upgrades to be, to complete the dispatch center because the hand-me-downs, if you will, go into that communications room to make it fully functional. In the event of a major incident in the city, we would turn that system on up there and we would assign somebody to run communications. That's a little different than the type of dispatching that Chief Ralston's team do on a regular basis. And we do have folks that are qualified to come in and run that communication center. So, we wouldn't be totally hobbled. However, even my recommendation, even if we were to contract with the county, we would still recommend that the dispatch center stay completely operational in the event of a significant emergency that impacts county dispatch. So, we'd have to pull people in for that.
So, have to talk to the chief about it. I, because it was one of my concerns if we contracted out, but I'm comfortable. First of all, I, I don't think it's feasible, just, I think you both stated well that it's, it's probably not going to be feasible, but I agree with Councilmember Costa that we owe it to do our due diligence on this, just like I was in support and I sort of was behind looking at the contract with the county for the fire department. Now, we can honestly say that it just was, did not pencil out. It was going to be too expensive. We're much better off. We all know that right now for a fact. If we don't do our due diligence, if we don't look at it, at least considering it, and I trust these two gentlemen here, they're experts again, as usual. I trust their, their research on it and they'll come back to us with a good recommendation. So, I think we should continue at least to go down the road to look at it. So, I agree with Councilmember Costa.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I just want to say that I'm really proud that we're a full-service city and we do everything on our own.
Chief Ralston, in, in your opinion, do we, is there a substantial possibility that we could get dispatch services from the county and be better off?
The cost would be quite a bit higher than what we're currently paying. We have, last year, earlier, earlier in 2013, when we lost four of our eight dispatch positions in a short period of time, we actually had the conversation with the county to consider, almost had a necessity to flip the switch, so to speak, to go to county dispatching until we got positions hired. And a brief assessment that they provided, they said it would, was going to be considerably higher for us. And that was the reason why we chose not to do that and to just continue to hire positions. We ended up having to move a police officer who had been a dispatcher at one time into the dispatch center. Our dispatch supervisor was moved back onto a console. And in order to keep the dispatch operating, we, we piecemealed it together and we've made it through that period. It would have been too high of a cost for us to, to go to the county at this time. And I'm sure that it would be in the future.
Does that help you, Councilmember Lingle, or Councilmember Costa? You know, we've already gone out and got an estimate and it didn't work out. And I don't really want to spend a lot of time on it because we already learned our lesson with the last go-to-the-county.
How long ago was that?
Uh, that was the summer of '13, this past summer.
So, understanding that, why, and which you're aware of, correct?
I am. This recommendation came from a consultant. And at your joint meeting, there was this similar discussion and the decision was made to leave it in, which is why I gave it a priority.
I think that maybe part of that is that we didn't hear the discussion. Well, I'm, I'm not sure that had, discussion had taken place yet.
It had taken place. We hadn't gone into a, a lot of detail with it, but we had, Captain Demming had actually had a conversation with part of their staff that was looking into the feasibility. And again, it was on a preliminary basis and it was, and we were told that it was going to be too expensive.
I don't know, whichever one of you was first on the button.
Do, the consultant didn't consult with Santa Barbara County on this topic? It was general recommendation?
Actually, the sheriff and the county fire chief were on the long list of stakeholders that were interviewed. So, they did have, and I don't have the list of all the questions they were, they were asked, so I don't know if it came up during the interviews or not. Operationally for the fire department, it would be good for everybody being one dispatch center. However, as Chief Ralston has shared, the, the sheriff does acknowledge that his center is, is not a cheap operation.
And, and if I could add to that, the, the county also, they base their, their costs on, for example, they, they offer emergency medical dispatching, EMD. We don't offer EMD. So, their costs may be a little bit higher because of the EMD aspect of it. Other parts of, you know, they have an Emergency Operations Center county-wide. There may be a fee for, you know, that they charge for that. There's other, I don't know what their fee structure is, but it could be based on other components that we don't have in ours.
I think the other thing to consider there is that you also dispatch for water and electric and wastewater on the weekends too, so we would have to contract for that also.
That's right.
Councilmember Lingle?
Well, since I do rely on the experts, I guess it's, uh, let's see, one and, one and a half, I guess, you know, because you're not really making a strong recommendation one way or the other. You're relying on the consultant.
I rely, we relied on the consultant to give us recommendations. The deeper I dig into this particular one with Chief Ralston and I start doing the pro and con, the old legal pad thing.
Yeah.
And I realize that the female jailer prob challenge is still going to be there if we contract with the county. In my opinion, that will negate, should there be any savings, that will wipe it out.
So, going with the experts, I'm going to abandon you. Councilmember Costa?
I understand the abandonment. I, uh...
Are you abandoning yourself?
I'll take the recommendation of chief's plural, and, and I think that unless there's new information that's brought forward, of course, which there may be with North County jail situation going on, you know, keep our ears open, but it doesn't need to be an A priority.
I understand.
Okay, I have one question and I probably should have asked it back on the fee schedule, but I had it in my notes for this side. And we've talked about this, so this is, this is nothing new. We have, we spend a lot of time responding to two private convalescent hospitals and to the Lompoc Hospital District convalescent facility when they have people who are much more highly trained than our, our EMT expanded scope folks on the engines.
I won't debate it with you, however, it's...
Yeah, I want you to explain to people why we're stuck in this rut responding to those and what, what you're work, what you're looking toward to solve that. Because we're basically, my point with him was that we're supplying a service to a business that's being paid to take care of patients and we're rolling out there multiple times a week. You know, it's one of our, those three sites are, two sites, I think, are our most frequent call sites in the city by far and away.
We, we do provide a fair number of responses to those facilities, varying levels of care in those facilities. As, as I committed to a while back and as is mentioned in the staff report, we've already started analyzing the calls. I've got a stack like this. And my preliminary analysis is most of the calls we're going to are justified, given the level of care that's currently being provided. I still am committed to drilling deep into them and meeting with the administrators of the facilities, showing them the results of our analysis and trying to find that fine line where this patient doesn't need the fire engine, a code-two ambulance will suffice. But the way the system is set up, even if one of the facilities were to call direct to the ambulance company, now, the ambulance company, their dispatching phones, et cetera, are handled by the sheriff's office. So, even if they called the sheriff direct and said, "We need an ambulance," and it triaged out as code-three, we would still be dispatched. Now, there's some interesting cases that we're following, one out of the Fresno area, I believe, is where we, no, maybe it was Bakersfield. There was a facility, a care facility, that refused to render aid. And there's some legislation coming down the pipe that, that we're tracking in that area. There is one of the facilities, and I can't remember the one off the top of my head, possibly you do, Mr. Mayor, where it absolutely, their policy is if somebody's down, no matter what, they will call nine, they are ordered to call 911. So, we have some of those challenges, but we, we're not, you know, setting it aside.
And, and to the, to the other point that you made when we talked about it, if we were able to move to triage dispatch, we could, that would be the stopping point. But I truly believe with regard to a fee structure that if we're rendering recurring service to a business that's basically supporting their business model for which they're being paid, then they need to pay a business license fee in effect for, for that service, that they're getting, it's above and beyond what anyone else gets. It'd be like me selling fireplaces and... It'd be like me selling fireplaces and calling you guys every time we tested a fireplace to make sure the building didn't burn down.
Wow.
That'd be a really good thing.
We have a fee for that, no.
Yeah.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Just real quick, Chief, on this dispatch, I want to clear my mind. We have our own dispatchers. That would help you police with our dispatch times that we're trying to meet right now, right? It would be quicker to dispatch with our own units here than to go to Santa Barbara. I don't see Santa Barbara responding any quicker than you with their dispatch.
Well, the technology, the technology that currently exists, really, it wouldn't be that much of a difference because of the way the station alerting is, the mobile data terminals, et cetera. So to stand up here and tell you that it'll be slower or faster, I cannot. I can tell you that once we put all the things in place that Chief Ralston and I have collaborated on and agree we need, our call processing and our station alerting and our turnout times will improve. But we could also see that improvement if we contracted with the county because they already have that in place.
Okay, are there any other questions? So I'd like to move approval of this. We had public comment. Yeah. Didn't we?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rewind. Public comment. Anybody want to talk to us about this item? I'm not going to put you on the spot again, Anne. You only get one spot per meeting. Okay, seeing no one rise, we'll close our oral communications. And we'll come back and we'll still make a motion. And I move the staff recommendation with the deletion of the consultant's recommendation contained on page four of 18 to thoroughly explore purchasing dispatch services from Santa Barbara County. Now, I'd be looking for a second.
I'll second.
And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes four, zero, and one absent. And let's just take a quick four-minute break. I know, but right now, there's something I need to do. So we're going to take a four-minute break because I'm the chairman. Okay, we'll come back to order and we'll go on to item number eight.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, item number eight is a proposal to amend the classification compensation plan regarding a proposed new deputy fire marshal slash fire captain job classification. And our recommendations are there before you. The background on this is similar to the last two items. It was an item that was discussed at the joint meeting. This one, a little different than the others, there was a fair amount of emphasis placed on this coming back, this item coming back as the number one priority by council. So we took that to heart, not to be confused with Stan Hart, but never mind. So in order to carry out direction, we consulted with finance, we consulted with the human resources department, and prepared this package for your consideration. The master plan does a great job of identifying our shortfalls in this area. We have been noticing a fairly constant uptick in activity, so much so that the city was gracious enough to grant permission for me to rehire as a retired and newantant, Battalion Chief Hart. And since that time, our turnaround time on plans is much less than a week. We literally have contractors now that call in the morning, and we're able to accommodate immediate inspections for them the same day. And we're starting to keep up with that load. I'm running out of hours on Stan, which is why this has a sense of urgency. He will be reduced to 20 hours a week, just so we can hang on to him, hopefully, long enough to get this position hired. I looked at the master plan, I utilized my past experience in running and developing fire prevention bureaus, and constructed with HR a job description that not only fit the rank structure of the department, but also met our needs. It's a rather extensive job description. I floated it by a couple of fire marshal friends of mine, and their comment was, wow, it's pretty complete. As we mentioned up in the discussion on the fee resolution, the projection is that we will recover right around 75 percent, if not more, of the cost of this position. Again, the finance department assisted me with the fiscal impact section and the one-time outfitting costs, and this is basically uniforms, personal protective gear, et cetera, and that's estimated at $5,450. For the entire budget cycle, what's left of it, the total impact is $187,991. But the remainder of the budget cycle is obviously much less. As I mentioned to you in the fee resolution, my intent is to have the fees loaded, the processing gear, and already working while we're recruiting. So when the individual comes on board, they will take full control of supervising that particular program as well as everything else that's in the job description. I don't want to, you know, get too deep into this. It's pretty straightforward. It's an additional position. It's a request to fund it out of reserves because of the startup, and we would very much appreciate consideration of embracing staff's recommendations so we can meet with HR tomorrow and start the process. I'm available for questions.
Councilmember Lingel?
Chief, are you our current fire marshal?
Currently, that duty is assigned to one of the battalion chiefs. As we make this change, I will be taking that duty on. The shift battalion chiefs just cannot manage that type of an assignment.
The reason I'm asking is the job description, this position, it says reports to the fire marshal. So, okay, so you'll be chief slash fire marshal?
Other duties are assigned.
Other duties are assigned, okay.
I've done it before. I'm pretty comfortable in supervising fire prevention.
Okay. And then, is it common to have, for a fire marshal or a deputy fire marshal to also be a fire captain?
Yes.
This is not something unusual. I mean, it's...
No, and as I researched other job descriptions, this is pretty much where they're pegging the deputies. It's not unusual for your fire marshal to either be a battalion chief or a division chief level.
Okay. And then the other question is, do we have anyone on our current staff that is a qualified fire marshal?
We have folks on our current staff that may qualify to take the test. The challenge is going to be the certified plans examiner, which is a good recommendation for this position. It did come out of the master plan. It carries with it a level of professional certification that I think is important for us. Right now, we don't have anybody that has all of this. The other challenge is, let's say we did, and somebody promoted up, and we have a backfill issue. We don't have, our firefighters have not been on the job long enough to qualify to take the engineer's test. So it would be a challenge. However, it's a challenge I'm willing to embrace if we have somebody in the department that can prove equivalency and comes out well in the testing process. This one is proposed, we would recruit in-house and out.
Yeah, and I'm glad we're doing, promoting. But my main reason for the question was, in the event this person is not hired and we lose the services of Battalion Chief Hart, do we have someone that could temporarily fill that position?
In all honesty, we have somebody that can fill the position, but that individual already has a pretty substantial workload running the fire department.
So we have to get a rent-a-chief so that you could go do the other job?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Acosta?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. What's the difference in cost between the service provided by Mr. Hart versus the service for this full-time position?
Well, Chief Hart is what's called a retired and newantant. So we don't pay benefits or PERS. But we do pay battalion chief's wage, because that's the rank he was when he retired.
Right, so I just wanted to be clear for the public as well, this isn't an entirely new position that we're looking to fund. It's essentially to fund a full-time position, which would be what we're currently paying plus PERS.
Well, it's less, salary-wise, it's less than what we're currently paying because we're currently paying battalion chief top step. So salary-wise, it's less. The benefit, you're right. It's a fully-benefited position.
So we don't know the difference, though. Can we recall what we're paying now versus what I see this cost here of depending, $146,408 for the remainder, or for the 14, 15 fiscal year? Do we know what...
Well, we can't work Stan past the 960 hours.
I'm just wondering what we're paying currently, that's all.
I don't know what top step battalion chief makes.
Without PERS and things like that?
I don't have that with me right now, but it wouldn't be hard to get and deliver to you as part of an update.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what that difference is. I know it can't be very much, I don't believe. I'm just wondering. But I understand, obviously, the need for this, and we need to get on it as soon as possible as Mr. Hart won't be with us for much longer. So I appreciate you bringing this forward to council, and if I can get that information, it would be appreciated.
There's another plus to this, because it's fully combat-qualified at the captain level, it does give us one more person on the fire ground to meet our effective response force requirements.
Chief, is this position like Chief Hart's position now, where it's a sworn position and he would be able to be, carry a firearm or not?
Well, we can have a discussion on firefighters carrying firearms, but probably not tonight. With the requirements that are in here, should Chief Ralston and I agree that it's warranted, the individual is qualified to be armed.
As it is with Chief Hart. It's not a common occurrence, but it is available.
It's not a common occurrence, and it's a whole discussion that I need to have with Chief Ralston because we're both fairly conservative.
Brad, just, and I didn't ask you ahead of time, so if you don't have it, I apologize. Do you know what our plan check recovery for fire was in the last budget year? Do you have any idea?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I do know that between the time that the three battalion chiefs were actively doing this as part of their full-time job, and when one of the longtime BCS left, that those monies dropped off significantly in either 1213 or 1112. So having a dedicated person will likely generate significantly more money than we are now from those services that are reimbursable.
And I guess my point in saying that is, although the request here is for $187,991.11, the reality is that a large portion of that will be covered by reimbursement, but we don't know what that is, and Chief is reticent to stick his neck out too far and come up short because he knows how bad that is.
Yes.
So, you know, although we're authorizing $187,000, the reality is, probably will be in the 50 percent range of that or even lower, especially if we do a really good economic development job right away. I am pledged to deliver a message from Councilmember Hohm doll that he particularly is concerned about getting this done and getting this person in place so they can have some time to spend with Stan because he's done such a good job with this and, you know, before he goes out. So that's Councilmember Hohm doll's concern. Okay, let's go to oral communication. Anybody want to talk to us about this subject? Not much of anybody left, but there's four of you that could stand up. Seeing no one rise, we'll close that and come back. Any other questions from council at this time? When I characterize a recovery, I think, you know, I know you're reticent to make a commitment on how much it is, but neither one of us believes that you're going to have no recovery in the time you're going to have some portion of this cost recovered. And the maximum would be 75 percent, and the minimum is probably 40 percent. Something in that general vicinity. But knowing how good you are, it will probably be 90 percent. No pressure.
No pressure, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Acosta?
I'd like to make a motion that council approve the new job description and salary range for the proposed new deputy fire marshal, fire captain job class, and adopt resolution number 5891 Prince 14, amending the classification and compensation plans to include the classification and salary range for the proposed new deputy fire marshal, fire captain job class, and approve a position allocation change in the fire department's budget for one full-time equivalent FTE deputy fire marshal, fire captain position, and approve the appropriations and program change that funded the proposed salary range adjustments for the balance of the fiscal year 2013-15 budget.
And I'll second that. Is there any other discussion at this time? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes four, zero, one absent, who would have absolutely voted for it.
Thank you all very much. I know these decisions are never easy, but we will do a good job.
And now, any written communications, Madam Clerk?
Nothing.
That was on behalf of Councilmember Hohm doll. Oral communication is your last opportunity to talk to us for two minutes on any subject. Seeing no one rise, we'll close, and we'll come back to council requests, comments, and meeting reports from the right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have not been to any meetings or traveled that represented a expense to the city. I do have, oh, one announcement and then I'll have a request. The announcement is I will be missing the next meeting, January 21st. I'll be in Sacramento for an NCPA meeting, so I won't be here. But I do have a request. Recently, at one of our Rotary meetings, there was a gentleman from an organization. It's called A Year Without War. The presentation was actually pretty interesting, but what I was intrigued about is this organization actually originated here in Lompoc, and now it is a, not only a national organization, but it's international. So I'm requesting that we just have someone from this group come and do a presentation before city council so we can hear about it, and we can also get the public to understand what this organization is. It doesn't have to be immediate, but sometime in the near future, a presentation by this group.
I think, you know, Bob, you can just ask them to come and make a presentation. You don't need us.
Well, it needs to be agendized.
No, presentations are at the direction of the city administrator. You can just do it.
Okay, I will contact them. Thank you.
And just, in the past, they asked for a particular level of support from the city and based on, and it was in a fairly short timeframe, based on the fact that we engage in supportive political things based on the League of Cities, and the League of Cities hadn't vetted it, that we weren't able to support them at that time.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, going on the public safety theme, I wanted to go ahead and do, read a little article out of the Lompoc record. The Lompoc Police Department Citizens Academy is currently open for registration. The academy is a 13-week course in the operations of the police department and law enforcement in general. Attendees will experience SWAT operations, police range techniques, and patrol ride-alongs. The class is limited to 25 participants and will be held Thursdays from 6:00 to 9:00 at the police department. The first class is scheduled to begin January 23rd. If you are interested, contact Sergeant Chuck Strange at 875-8155. Thank you.
Councilmember Acosta?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Councilmember Lingel, thank you for mentioning on the 21st, I will be in Sacramento as well for the NCPA meeting. So I will not be in attendance at that meeting. We may want to consider what's on the agenda then for that night, as two of us will both be gone. be gone. In addition, 2020 Year Without War approached me quite a while back, and I put them in contact with the mayor at that time, and we didn't get that letter or the proclamation or letter of support at that time, but I'm hoping that after the presentation, we can then agendize a potential proclamation, only because, like you said, this organization was based out of Lompoc in its inception, and now it is an international nonprofit based out of Santa River City College. So thank you for bringing that up. I'm looking forward to that presentation as well, and that's all I have. Thanks.
One announcement. Tomorrow evening, the Parks and Rec Commission will be having a meeting to discuss potential improvements using the leftover bond funds from the Park Pool Assessment District, no, RDA bonds. And that meeting is at six o'clock at the Anderson...
Dewey's.
Dewey's, at the Dewey's. So if you have things you would like to contribute, and those improvements would be to the Parks and facilities within the redevelopment area or immediately adjacent, which would be Ryan Park, Thompson Park, Centennial Park, the Pocket Park, the Civic Auditorium, JM Park, and the Anderson Recreation Center. So if you have some thoughts you would like to share, tomorrow night is the discussion that we've waited for for quite a while. I will be delivering the State of the City address on January 21st, so there's something that you all are going to miss, and I, but don't worry, I'll save you a copy. And I have one request tonight to carry something forward that we've been working on for a while, forever. And that has to do with the east side annexations, because as part of our general plan discussion, we established where the urban limit line is, and I would now like to move forward and complete that. So with the completion of the first elements of the general plan and the positioning of the urban limit line on the east side of the Santianez River, it is now time to move forward with the annexation process to finish that work. So number one, instruct the staff to move forward with the annexation of all parcels and portions thereof on the west side of the Santianez River within the new urban limit line, and the drive-in parcels on the north side of the river. And for my benefit, to divide consideration to three areas so that I can participate in most of the discussion, as my wife has property within 500 feet of some of the city-owned parcels, so we would divide it as follows. One consideration would be parcels south of the Parisima Highlands Development and north of McLaughlin Road. The next one would be parcels south of McLaughlin Road and generally north of Barton Avenue, where the parcels owned by my wife cause a conflict of interest for me. And the next one would be parcels generally south of Barton Avenue and north of Highway 246. And this annexation will not include the city-owned parcels, which include River Park. I'd be looking for two more persons to come onboard.
Let me ask a quick question about this.
Sure.
Aren't we going to do this with the rest of the...
No.
We've already, I've put in my inputs for amendments to the Phase One General Plan already.
Yeah, this isn't an amendment. This is to take what we already agreed to do and go forward. It was just the next step.
We've already approved Phase One of the general plan, so what is this?
This is to go to LAFCO and complete the annexation on those parcels that are within our urban limit line that we...
If I may, through the mayor, Councilmember Starbuck, it's not related to the general plan. It's related to whether or not the annexation process is going to commence. Ultimately, the general plan will have to be amended to identify what uses would be permitted on that site specifically, but this is just to start the process to actually have the annexation go forward.
Correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't that process usually take place by the property owner? Or is it by the city?
We are the property owner of many of these.
But you said that the annexation will not include the city-owned parcels, which include River Park.
But we agreed when we went through the general plan update process that although we were leaving the urban limit line there, we were not going to include those parcels in an annexation. River Park, the far side of the river, as opposed to Riverbend Park, this side of the river. That was in our discussion when we dealt with that. I think this is, and my point is that we have wide support within the whole community to move forward with this. We don't necessarily have wide support with regard to the annexation of River Park, and I would like to get done those things that we can get done without conflict.
And I think it's true that typically, Lompoc does wait for the property owner to participate, but that doesn't mean that the city council, the city on its own, can't take the lead on the process.
And the bulk of these parcels are owned by the city.
My only question is the amount of staff time that this would take out from the continuing down the process that the planning division has started.
At this point, we're discussing whether or not to put it on the agenda, so let's not spend too much time on the detail. But I understand that the points you're making relate to whether or not you even want to put it on the agenda, right?
Right.
It's just that this has been an ongoing issue for many, many years, and it's time to put this one away and be done with it. You know, we've taken all the steps to get to this point, and now we need to get this done while this council is sitting here that has made those decisions that got us to where we are now. And this is nine months, a nine-month process to go through LAFCO. So we need to start now if we're going to get it done while we're still sitting here.
Just real quick, I wanted to ask Ms. Gallant, is this something that Lucille is, you know, aware of, our planner? And I mean, I mean, obviously, I want to go ahead and move forward on any of these processes that we have and have discussion on, but...
This has come up this evening as a council request to move forward at this time, so we would like to provide information on the impacts and the costs associated with considering this, and bring that type of information forward if council wants to agendize the item.
Yep.
Well, I'll go ahead and support the recommendation. I'd like to look at it.
Look, you know that I'm not necessarily in favor of some of these annexations, however, I think it's worth bringing it forward for discussion, and I know that, it's unfortunate that you brought it now because I know Councilmember Hohndahl would be your third right now otherwise, so I'm sort of speaking for him, but I also think it's worth bringing it forward for discussion, even though I'm not necessarily in favor of some of these annexations, but it's worth the discussion, so I'll be your second, third.
And just so the record's clear, this isn't for the annexation. It's to put it on the agenda whether or not you want to start the process.
That's why I think it's worth the discussion, yes.
Okay. The only other report I have, as I didn't travel at city expense to any events during the, since the last meeting, I did meet with a number of different economic development clients and opportunities, and we continue to receive almost daily inquiries with regard to opportunities in Lompoc, so it's pretty exciting. I did spend some time with someone who purchased a building here in town, and they bought it based on the fact that they have faith in Lompoc and they're going to make something happen with it. It was a very, very substantial purchase, so I think that's a huge vote of confidence in the city. So all good things. Anything else, anybody? Okay. We therefore will adjourn to a regular meeting at 7:00 PM on January 21st. Thank you for your time.